Award to order, if everybody would please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair motion approval of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Announcement, March thirteenth, facilities committee meeting, seven AM, right here. April fourth, finance committee meeting, seven thirty AM, doing that by Zoom. April fifteenth will be a policy committee meeting at five thirty PM, followed by our regular board meeting at six PM, right here. At this time, I'd like to invite Mark Fenright and Dale Kimball.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone, and our board members, and thank you, parents, for being here tonight. It's certainly an exciting night to recognize our TakaBots, and it has been in the works for many, many years. And with our TakaBot students, would you come up here to the front, please? And Mr. Kimball, I'm gonna have you come up also, come on up. Because we have a lot to celebrate tonight, and I can't be more proud. We are forty-one students strong on the TakaBots, and this is just a sample of all the kids that participate on the program. But what I'd like to do tonight, I'm gonna show a couple video clips, so you get a taste of what these kids did. And then we're gonna have a few of them just speak a little bit about their experience, and then what's gonna happen next. So let's just take a look at this, first of all. First of all, it is official, we were first-place winners at 2024 Northern Lights Regional Competition in Duluth. No one had any expectation or idea that that was gonna happen. We knew that we were gonna do well, but to come out on number one was quite amazing. So let's take a look and see what you guys did. So this'll be a clip, the very last competition, you guys can double-decker.
Can you tell us quickly, before you show it, what was the robot supposed to do? What was the task?
Yeah, so...
Come up here, come up here.
So we know what we're watching and stuff, you know?
Yeah, okay, so, there's these orange discs, they're like frisbees almost, or like a donut that's like stretched out. There's one in the robot in that frame right there.
Okay.
But we drive around, we pick those up, and then we can either shoot them up into what's called the speaker, or down into what's called the amp. And then there's also, there's that chain that's hanging on the left side. There's three sides to that, and you climb it, and you shoot down into it. And that's what we are the best at, we're number one in the world for that. So, it's pretty crazy.
Thank you.
See what number one in the world is? Let's take a look. We are sixty-one, forty-seven.
Just to let everyone know, right now, that's autonomous, no one's touching any of the controllers.
Yeah, shooting up into that little slot.
Yes. So now it switches that you're driving it, right? So this is the part where we are the tops in the world with getting that robot up on the chain, shooting in the ring, doing that three times in a row. So when you were in the finals, our family was watching this on TV, we were up in Duluth, and I was so excited, we're cheering and yelling, not really understanding what we're cheering and yelling at. So we don't know all the rules, but we knew it was really fast, and then shot those things far and quick. Were you guys practicing this in the cafeteria? I knew I saw you guys in there. So there's different amounts of points, right, for where you shoot? Like, when you climb up, you get more points for that?
It looks like you gotta get up more up over the chain, like, right, right? Did that do so far?
So you're competing in alliances, so there's a blue alliance with the three robots, they work together. And then against the red alliance, two different robots.
So, by the other, the other...
They're part of our, they're part of our team, working together.
Now, this is the last competition?
Yeah, so what this was, was the very last, after we won the Northern Lights Regional, across the arena is the Ten Thousand Lakes Region, going on simultaneously. The winner of the Ten Thousand Lakes is competing against us, the winner of the Northern Lakes. So this is the ultimate, ultimate competition. And team, how did you do?
We got a hundred and seven points or something.
Hundred and seven points, and we came in first place. Who's the last one? And you have to be up before the buzzer, right? Is that...
Almost double.
So that gives you, I mean, that shows you what they were doing all day long, all weekend long. And I wanna share one other clip, and then we'll have a few comments here. You know, you think about, if you watch ESPN, there's always commentators talking about rehashing everything that you're watching. The same thing's going on in the robotics world, call it ESPN Robotics. And I just wanted to show you a clip of that. And they're talking about sixty-one, forty-seven Mamas Taka.
But for my actual fill of the week, I have Team Fifty-One Forty-Seven TakaBots out of Minnesota. They actually attended the Northern Lights Regional with me. Christine, I believe you had a great nickname for them, but what I would say is they have the highest endgame EPA in the world. They are unbelievably good at Trap, arguably the best team in the world at the Trap. They completed three of them in thirty-eight seconds, as you're watching the video here. Absolutely unbelievable. They are a tall robot, they built the robot that you should've built. They built the robot that I didn't build, eighty percent of teams should've built. It's unbelievable, I'm jealous, they beat our bots, and, you know, I'm really, really happy to have another great team in Minnesota doing as well as they are.
That's like a solid four-inch googly eyes on that robot, too.
Oh, it's fantastic.
Is it the colored, the colored googly eyes? I like that, yeah.
Instruction tape, too, for the TakaBots, that's cute.
That's right, but for my actual fill of the week, I have Teams Fifty...
So it is truly, uh... It's a truly special thing of this recognition and the work. And what I get so excited about is that these are students that, you guys are all in. Like, this is what you do, and it can't be more proud of that. And everyone has that thing that they do in high school, and this is your thing, and you do it really, really well. So what I'd like to do, just a couple of you, just share a little bit, just describe, what is the season like? Like, when does it start? And what does it feel like right before you go up to build them? Could someone help us with that?
You're a sports person, you're doing a good job, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, the season, it starts out, we get a video that shows us all the rules, like a quick overview of the competition, and then there's a big rulebook that's like a hundred-something pages of all the rules, dimensions for all the game pieces. And we get to work right away.
When does that start?
It starts from the first week of January.
So after Christmas break, you're...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We start designing right away, like, the first week or two is just straight design, making a computer model of our robot, and then we spend the rest of the time building it, changing little things, but mostly staying dedicated to that one design. And, yeah, and driving practice was a big part of this year. And also having our autonomous code being able to be tested was big.
What's the autonomous code?
So that is all run by just code, nobody's touching the controller. It's all just the robot.
For the first fifteen seconds.
First fifteen seconds.
And that's part of the competition, because you got award for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's certain specs that you have to stay, everybody has to stay within when you're building these?
Yeah, so there's a limit to how big our frame can be, and how heavy it can be, yeah.
Very, very specific specs, and then they go through an inspection before you're competing. And it is quite possible that maybe you have to do some tweaks last minute before they allow you to compete, because they really wanted to be an even field.
Reminds me of the Cub Scout Pine Wood Derby on steroids.
There you go.
So, the other two, you have the big, the main machine, the main robot, what were, you had two others, though? Right, two other smaller ones, or no?
So, no, they were, they were the same, uh... So other high schools build their own robots, and they, and then they put up on their, on the field, other robots. We were with two other high schools, and we had our robot, and then the two other ones were two other high schools built by other robots.
Okay.
One of the things that first is known for, they use the term gracious professionalism. And they really zero in on the culture of collaboration before competition. That's why they, they design the teams and the competitions in that way, gracious professionalism. It's really in the DNA of First Robotics, because we are grooming that the new leaders that'll be coming up, that are gonna be in business and organizations, and we start now. One thing that I was impressed by is when you're there and you're excited, you got your bots working great, but you can see that you're banging around a little bit, and some people are banging around. And I, Dory filled me in that before the championship, you're making runs different places, trying to just keep this thing together and going. So there's quite a bit of problem solving, too, and just hope that the integrity has already been compromised, and now you've tried to fix it. Can you tell us a little bit about the stress of what happens, just in some, some words? Because what I'm seeing there is it's running like it was planned, I mean, it was amazing, but I don't, just looked incredible.
Here's our problem solver, this is a troubleshooter right here?
I was, I was the one who broke the robot. So we decided, or at the competition, I was, you know, going, competing, and I was bumping in real hard, and we ended up bending the frame pretty bad, so we had to bend it back, and that was a little hectic. So now we're rebuilding a whole new frame to make it more durable, and that I could not...
Like, and what kind of timeframe did you have to get that frame back?
We had twenty minutes before we had to get to comp, because we were the very first match, because our match got canceled the night before, so we were before the first match, actually.
So is this in practice that you bent it, or...
Uh, no, that was at the competition.
Now, in fairness, the only comment I ever heard about you is that you have ice going through your veins, and no one can drive this like you can, so I didn't hear one criticism about how you drove it.
Do you have your regular driver's license yet?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Insurance.
So, so tell us a little bit about the World Competition coming up.
Yeah, you wanna do that, what's next?
Yeah, it's kinda like the one that we just did, but much more high stakes, and it's down in Houston, Texas. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long trip, and we're gonna be taking a coach bus. And we actually need funds for it, so... I was gonna blow this, there's a GoFundMe on, uh... Somewhere, yeah.
It's somewhere in here.
Yeah, on there, yeah, on that hill, no?
It's the same robot, the same task down there, competing against people from all over the world, that now?
Yeah, some better teams.
Better teams?
How many teams are there, young?
Six hundred.
Wow. So you were at fifty-five this time around, now you're going to six hundred?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh... So... At Worlds, we basically split up into eight divisions, as they call them randomly. So we only have to go against seventy-five teams in our division, and then we go into the winners of that. But in total, it is the best of the six hundred.
And, and to realize that the robots are coming from all over the, seriously, all from the world. We know from past, you know, from Israel, Western Europe, South America, all over the place. They will be competing against the best of the best, and let's not forget, you're number one in the autonomous, in the trap.
So that, that number one means you had the fastest time of any team in the world so far?
Fastest time and the most points scored.
Well, it's not, uh, that ranking is not based off of the time necessarily, it's, we have the app. For that centerpiece, we have the average highest score on that.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of teams that have struggled with Trap a lot.
Yeah.
So will you be bringing the same exact robot to the, to Houston?
We do plan to make some changes and improvements, but, yeah, the whole design obviously stays the same.
So, Mr. Fenright has been presenting since it started to the board, and so this is one of his passions. And Dale really appreciate your engagement over the years. I think it's amazing, board members, as you've come into high school, though, this parent group of how they've invested so much time and resources, and how you've secured supplies and just talent to assemble such an incredible bot, and work with your kids, and have your kids work on this, the community that's come together to raise from twenty to forty, and to learn from past and grow to where you are, I, it's heartwarming. And you're working in hallways, and you're working in a lot of classrooms that weren't really designed for any of this, and yet rising above and just coming up with such an incredible product. And so, it's, um, it's fun to see this whole community come together, and then that success was just blow our minds. So we just wanna say thanks to everyone for your engagement.
You worry about anybody stealing your design for the next competition?
Go ahead, talk about that, I mean, it's part of it.
So, there's the gracious professionalism part that Mr. Fenright just...
We're too gracious?
Because in the real world, you know, they'd be stealing that.
Yeah, I mean, with a month left, I don't think we have to worry about any teams stealing our ideas, but... It's with the gracious professionalism, the whole idea is to share ideas and collaborate. So, yeah, and we have a pretty big social media presence, starting this year, so...
So we will see what the other robots look like. So you patented, right, that's part of your GoFundMe, it's patented, and now you're taking in funds?
So I'm looking at the comments on the sheet, and a number of them are from Chief Delphi? Is that, who, I'm, I'm an old guy, I don't know, you know?
Chief Delphi, I don't think it's officially first anything, but, uh, it's a very large place for first, and to the gracious professionalism thing, it's where a lot of people can share ideas. And, uh, a lot of times, teams will post everything they need help, so it's really just an open discussion, so those are... So the Chief Delphi comments are comments other teams are saying about our team.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Really proud of you guys, this is just amazing, when I, when I saw it online and I read about it, I go, this, this is just amazing. So, I really hope you guys bring home the...
So before we, we close this segment, I do wanna make a plug, you do have a flyer there that talks about the team. They are fundraising actively for their trip to Houston, and there is waves on that flyer to show you how to easily fundraise with a QR code, and any donations are very much appreciated. And I also wanna end with, we have some wonderful sponsors. Truly wonderful sponsors that have come through and are supporting us and the trip to Houston, because it's not cheap to go down there. And, uh, and they are working on fundraising at least ten thousand dollars, they have a GoFundMe page. We have some corporate sponsors that are coming through for us to really keep the cost of the trip as low as we can for the students. So, it's all coming together great, and it's just been a pleasure to have you guys here tonight, and parents, too, to be a part of this, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
I know you got a lot of hamchicken when you're there, but we do that here, too, so if you don't mind coming through for us.
You're gonna start here and come this way. So, and then come this way, congratulations, you guys, congratulations. Congratulations? Congratulations?
Good luck, good luck in Houston.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Congratulations, good job.
You are welcome to stay for the whole meeting, or you can go, if you want.
Thanks again, everybody. Are you suggesting the rest of the meeting will be the same?
Mark, I wanted to know about student rep, Mark.
You know, my, that is a... Apparently somebody's created a design in the competition.
This isn't First for Minute Taka number one, or else?
It has to be.
All right, are there any, is there any, what he wants to do, any public comments tonight? Nope, we'll move on then, and go to the student rep report.
I will just make a brief comment, I think you're, uh... A lot of the students, the student senate's also in DECA, and so I wasn't updated, but I imagine, I know our student president, and her sister that presented, and the vice president are all in DECA right now in the cities, so I think we probably got the whole crew going on. They come back tomorrow night, and they've had a really good beginning.
Okay.
Ralph, you're on the treasures report.
I'll try to make it as exciting as possible. We begin with January and February cash donations, James and Melissa Murphy from West Tonka Wings, one thousand dollars. MWHS Hockey Boosters, Mount Westa, West Tonka Boys Hockey, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. MWHS Basketball Boosters, Mount West Tonka Girls Basketball, one thousand thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. MWHS Hockey Boosters, Mount West Tonka Girls Hockey, three thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. Trinity Lutheran Church Community Education, one thousand dollars. Minneapolis Foundation, Tyler Russell Hill Memorial Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Yana Rusmason, John Rusmason Memorial Scholarship, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents. John and Cheryl Dale, Cheryl Woolley and John Dale Class of Sixty-Three Scholarship, twenty-eight thousand dollars. MWHS Basketball Boosters, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, one hundred dollars. The Pruitt Family, Eric Dagan Memorial Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Blackbaud Giving Fund, Captain's Club, twenty dollars. Gregory Lean Memorial Fund, MWHS Boys Hockey, five hundred dollars. Heidi Decineas, West Tonka Wings, five hundred dollars. Charities and Aid Foundation, Mount West Tonka High School, fifty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. MWHS Speech Boosters, MWHS Speech Team, one thousand dollars. Blackbaud Giving Fund, MWHS Activities, twenty dollars. Ohio File, or I think that's how you pronounce that, Prince, MWHS Activities, fifty-three dollars and three cents. MWHS Hockey Boosters, MWHS Boys Hockey, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. MWHS Wrestling Boosters, for the wrestling team, two thousand four hundred dollars. American Online Giving Foundation Community Education, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Mighty Cause Community Education, one hundred and forty dollars. American Legion Auxiliary Unit, three ninety-eight. American Legion Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Minneapolis Foundation, Tyler Russell Hill Memorial Scholarship, five thousand dollars. Crime Prevention Fund, Crime Prevention Fund Scholarship, two thousand dollars. Mary and Kathleen Excel, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Butch Humbert, Larry Excel Memorial Scholarship, one hundred dollars. Long Lake Fire Department, Long Lake Fire Department Scholarship, one thousand dollars. Pamela Myers Living Trust, Dr. Pam Myers Scholarship, one thousand dollars. John B's, John B's First Robotics, two hundred and fifty dollars. Wade Leener, First Robotics, five hundred dollars. Friends of MWHS, First Robotics, ten thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and eleven cents. Total cash donations for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school years so far, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, fifty-four dollars and fourteen cents. And Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I've looked at the check ledger and the check blotter, and all looks in good order.
Thanks, Ralph. Are there any committee reports, anybody else? Nope, that's done, we'll move on to the finance report, Kathy.
You're expecting a number-one ranking World Best Financial Report?
I'm gonna do my best. I like Ralph, it's, my report's not nearly as exciting as the robotics team, but I do feel so proud of the team. Mark and I were just reminiscing, we have student activity funds, and again, it seems like just a couple years ago, he came to my desk and said, hey, do you think we can start an activity fund for robotics? And I went, yeah, I think we can do that, and it's fun to see now, tonight, their success in such a short period of time, so, congratulations to them.
All right, I have a very short board meeting tonight, or, excuse me, a short board report tonight. First touch on the enrollment, and as of March first, our enrollment was two thousand three hundred and ninety-four students, which is identical to the prior month, and so again, real pleased, all throughout the year, we've had real consistent enrollment. So again, makes some budgeting easier, and very happy about that. Expenditures, we have received seventeen million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, or forty-five point six percent of our revised budget. And expenditures, we've expended twenty-two million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, or fifty-nine percent of our revised budget, which is thirty-eight million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand. Both receipts and expenditures are pacing appropriately at this point in the school year. Just a couple other items, again, we are working, now that we have completed the revised budget last board meeting, we're working on the adopted budget, that's underway. Next month, we'll be giving the building principals their budget sheets to work for, work at. We'll be presenting that in June, and between now and then, in a few weeks, we have our school board finance committee, and we'll be checking in with them on our progress of the, of the adopted budget. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Teaching learning?
So I just have a couple updates for you tonight. One of the things I wanted to bring to you tonight, to share with you, as many of you know, we have a curriculum review cycle. And, you know, sometimes, we don't talk a lot about this, but the CRC, our curriculum review cycle, is really one of the main undergirders of successful student learning in our district. We take the review, the implementation of our curriculum very, very seriously. We're on a seven-year cycle, and we have a very methodical process of, when it's time to start a year one, year two, getting into the current curriculum, looking at research, looking at new curriculums that are out there, that are available, looking at student needs, we go through a process with that. And a part of that also is aligning our curriculums and our programs with academic standards. And this slide here gives you just a, just a high-level overview of the work that is going on in our review cycle. And every discipline is on a calendar, and so we have year one, year two, year three, year four. The years one through three are usually the really big, heavy years for committees to do their work. And in year one this year, would be school counselors, K-12 science, and high school business. And all of them are focused on looking at and embedding the new Minnesota academic standards, for example, in science, and also... For example, in science, and also in school counselors, they have national standards. And your, your benchmark, your academic standards, again, is, is a very important foundational piece for anything that we're doing. It's your rider. It drives the instruction. So that is what's going on this year in those three areas. High school, business, there, there are more, because we have newer teachers now in the business department. They're getting their hands around, developing what we call pacing charts, and making sure the standards that are existing in their current courses are the ones that they want to use. So that's year one. And year two is, is the same work that's going on with our media specialists, and we're looking at their curriculum, but also, they have national standards that they use to really guide the work they do in their area. You've noticed that there's not a year three. Year three is art and music. We've done the work and the tasks in the review cycle that they need to complete with the curriculum, aligning the standards, making sure the programming is what we want. So there was no work in that area. And then in year four, sometimes, we have to pull committees out of their traditional cycle, because the state of Minnesota now has released what are called the New 2020. Because of the pandemic, everything got delayed, so the New 2020 Minnesota ELA academic standards, they need to be implemented by the 24-25 school year. So we're at work now at the elementary, middle school, high school level to do that work. So that, these are things that we don't talk a lot about at a board meeting, but are important tasks, are important things that we do across our system to ensure that your instruction is the correct instruction, we're hitting the right benchmarks, that drives achievement. And there are some places where that's not always taken seriously, or the review curriculum isn't always taken seriously, or as thoughtfully. And I always say, this is one of the reasons why we're as successful as we are, that we have a very strong process in place. I just wanted to share that with you.
So we lost one four-year cycle from the 2020?
No, no, it, it, the cycle has been that the state delayed implementation of new academic schools. They come out every 10 years. And during that year where we were, you know, you know, in distant learning, we did put the whole review cycle on hold for a year. So we're just getting cut off and getting back to normal. The other, the other thing I just wanted to mention with you, as you know, there's a lot of work going on with our high school redesign project, and I'm really excited about the work that we're doing around career tech education. And so we've talked a little bit about, you know, bringing in a certified nursing assistant program, the EMR/EMT programming that we're working on, machining, manufacturing program, and continuing with engineering program and woods program. And we study these different parts of CTE education, because these are the needs for the future. These are areas that we want to make sure we provide our students experiences, exposure to possible careers that they want to go into after they graduate from Mount West Tanka High School. So in those areas, just to, to share where we are with this, you know, we're working with Wold Architects, and they're focused on figuring out what kind of space we need. What does the space look like? Well, in order to have those communications, we have to understand, well, what is the programs are gonna look like? So between November and today, you can see with Certified Nursing Assistance, that program, we're making lots of different connections with experts in the field. These are gonna be partners with us as we get going with these programs. Same thing with EMR and EMT. We're, we're very fortunate already. Dr. Kevin Suprell, he's a parent here in the district. He's gonna be our medical director when it comes time to really develop the program for EMR and EMT. And then in the area of machining, manufacturing, we have just, you know, I'll call them friends, from, from John Tros, from Minnesota Precision Manufacturing Association, and E.J. Dagle. He's the, one of the deans at Dunwoody. We just had a conversation with him just the other day, talking about, what are you looking for as soon as I go to Dunwoody? What are the skills? What are the experiences? These individuals help us drive the programming that we're gonna be offering here in a couple of years.
Mark, dumb question. CTE, what does that stand for?
That is Career Tech Education. And what comes with that are formal career tech education programs for the department of that. And then that allows us to garner career tech levy dollars to help pay for equipment, for the teaching, all the setup. And, and that'll come here in about a year when we start making those formal applications.
So the department of that has, has programming standards for these kind of things that we utilize to help create the program?
They, they have expectations, not the same as academic standards, but they have parameters, expectations, criteria that you have to follow in order to be approved for these programs. The same thing with Certified Nursing and the EMR/EMT, that'll also go through the Department of Health. And they'll have their own requirements and parameters and certifications that we have to meet in order to offer the program. So, but first things first, we gotta make our connections and our networking, establish that, and then we'll, we'll get into those things in the coming year. And then just the, the last two pieces, we have an existing engineering program. We'll continue with offering engineering courses. And then we'll be doing some revisions in the woods program, where we have traditional woods, the basics of, you know, construction, and, and making small, you know, projects, but then we want to get into the construction trades. So then, what does it mean if I want to go into construction? What do those skills look like? So we worked with Mr. Kenwald, did some revisions in that area. I, I come tonight just to share that it's really an exciting time. It truly is. The revisions, the revamping, the ideas of as we build this building over here, it's truly the programming that we're gonna be offering you in the future that is the most important piece. So more, more to come.
Thank you. Thank you.
So just a couple updates. One, Mark already spoke a little bit to it, but we continue to be working with a lot of different groups on moving our facilities project forward. I want to thank all board members, for different board members that are involved in the design groups. First coming out to bid will be our security package for Hilltop Shirley Hills in the early learning. I think it's important just to remind people, the reason why that was elevated is the lead times that we need to get that equipment and the engineering that had to be done to be able to put that in place was more specific, that it allowed us to have a quick turn of phone. Obviously, security on all of our projects is something that's a priority. Grandview was one year later, because we're moving the office to where the stage is. We're reconfiguring the old office area to some special education space, but also a space that's gonna complement the media center for learning space. And there's more design that's required of that project, and there's longer lead times of some of what we're gonna be doing there. And then the high school is gonna be a longer project. It's gonna start next spring, and it's gonna go through '26, and there'll be some cleanup, I'm sure, into '27 there in the summer months. And so with that, that's, the Hilltop Shirley Hills early learning was prioritized for security, largely because the scope allowed us to take action first on that. The other project that's moving forward is gonna be combining the bus garage and the tennis courts. And what allows that to happen at this point is, again, lead times, but that we can continue that project into the fall versus it has to be done in the summer months. And so we will be bidding out both those projects. We're really excited about it. Excited about the improvements. We will be able to, I think it'll be our April meeting that we're gonna be approving bids that came in. Again, those are competitive bids, so that'll be posted out there. We'd like anybody that's interested, that's qualified, to be able to bid on those projects. And that we will be able to give you a report at that meeting of how did those results come in. With the tennis courts, again, that's gonna be by the bus garage there. It's gonna be 12 courts. We are really excited about the design. We took input from coaches, from parents. We took, we know that our students are gonna love these courts. We also looked at community members, both that play tennis and pickleball. Just really trying to get some well-rounded feedback of how can this first serve our students? And that's the primary focus, but like we've done with some of our other spaces, how can that serve others as well? And so we're, we're excited about bringing that project. Like I said, Grandview is in the process of their design, and we look at, a lot of the focus right now has been on the office area where the stage currently is gonna be, and then the space across from the media center and the media center. But there is also, we're replacing doors in there. We're replacing the floor in the little gym. There's some, a lot of piping that's gonna be replaced in the building. So it's beyond just some of the aesthetics that you're gonna see, it's some of the maintenance items. And then finally, the high school, and it's, I, I said to the design group this past week, you, you walk into a building for many years, and you make the most out of the building that you have, and you try to look at things, it's kinda like a family member. You look at it in the best light, knowing that we're all flawed, but you're, you're just proud of your staff, you're proud of where you live. And since the bond passed, it gave me the ability just to look at it probably in true colors, and to know that we're gonna be able to address some of these deficiencies. I can't tell you how exciting that is. And so we talk about, we have the robotics team here, and I'm just so tickled that they're gonna have a space that is gonna have good storage, that they can utilize space in the engineering space in a way that they can't right now. So it's not a brand-new space, it's just designed better to meet multiple people's needs. We look at that we're able to enter in nursing, and Mark gave you a good review of different contexts. This is what our community needs now, and to have kids that are going along that, to have both be served so well, so exciting. We just threw out an invite, inviting people that are connected to machining in our community. We had over 20 people that attended this meeting on a night. I mean, there's so much excitement and thirst that people are introduced to this field of work, and their engagement with us, wanting this to be a successful program. We talked about the safety and security of the high school, and how we're gonna redo the entrances, and how we're gonna have these lockdown capabilities. Those aren't just words, that's truth. We talked to our academic teams, so our social studies department, our science department, our English department. You go on department, department, of what those spaces are gonna change over? And part of it, you're excited that you finally get new carpet in some areas, right? But that, that the classrooms are designed, and are partners in Wold. I want to speak, Wold does more business for the K-12 market in Minnesota than any other architect engineer. You do not get that without a reputation that's positive. They do quality work, we've used them for our past projects, and they're gonna be coming in and giving us a design that's, our staff is not gonna have to work around, but it's gonna accelerate their talents. And so from multiple different areas, we look at how we're gonna do student services. And as we dealt with some things in the past month, and you look at having a space that brings people together, that's designed. You talked about natural light coming into the school and open spaces and aesthetics. It just goes on. And so there is no question, I'm so proud of our community that they supported it, but the high school is a significant need that we're gonna be able to address. And so I do look at it in a little bit of a different light now. It's very exciting. I just want to thank the board again that we're able to do this kind of work, to be able to advance our opportunities for our kids. I know our community is gonna be really pleased to see some of these results. Also, I'd just share with you that we've sent out a, a fair amount of communication, and one thing about communication is you just gotta keep on communicating and communicating, but we're in the middle of a brand review for our district. We put that out in January and February. We, now we're sending a postcard out to the community as a whole to remind them that we want their input and we want their feedback. And so we did some individual connections, we did a focus group, and then we are doing a survey. And the survey was sent out to our parents and anyone that's on our email list, and we'll keep on pushing out that way. We're gonna continue to push out on social media. But we did do a postcard, and I know the postcard's out there, because one line in the postcard is, "If you do not work with technology and you want a paper copy, give us a call," and we got two calls today. So we will get them their survey so we can get that feedback. And so I know that it's out there, and I know at least a few of them are reading that. But here's the goal of the branding review. One, we have inconsistencies with our brand, and we want to review that. And we want to know, how can we best represent our community and have a strong brand? The second thing is, we're gonna be investing dollars in our high school and some of the complementing spaces. And so before we put our logo, or our words, our font places, we just want to make sure that we thought it through, and that we did get feedback. And of course, not everyone's gonna align on the same thoughts, but that it went through an intentional process that we did as well as we can with them. So I'm, I'm pleased with how those steps are going. Finally, I would just share on this lovely Monday day that I'm sure some people are wondering, how long is Kevin gonna go? Is that we have some action items today in your board packet. And these are some of our actions that aligns our enrollment to our staffing. And so at the February meeting, you took an action to make a reduction of our expenditures by $50,000. Part of that is aligning our staffing to our enrollment. There's a second piece of it, that we start challenging a lot of our different budgets. And I put out to parents, I put out to staff, if anyone has ideas that they think we should review, we take all ideas. But we challenge certain service contracts that we have, and we look at smaller dollar amounts and bigger dollar amounts. One thing that's gonna be, that I'm really proud of our district is, years ago, we went self-insured. We've been staying with our health insurance and our dental insurance, and we're falling, again, far below trend. And so with the dollar amount that we need to make up, we're gonna see a significant savings from what was in our revised budget, and where we are gonna be with our health and dental. And so that's complements that decision of going self-insured, and for where our staff currently is with that plan. And so I really see between the insurance and some of how we're handling staffing, our ability to meet that, that goal. Lastly, you have an addition of a teacher on special assignment. When you look at the training and the qualifications that you need for a special education teacher, and we look at some of the transition that we've had with, due to a number of different leaves for different reasons, this is a way that we can make sure that we're meeting our IEPs and the statutes that oversee them, and have that done in an organized way. And so we've looked at past years, and we feel like this is a needed staffing investment to make sure that we do right by our students, and then also by our staff, that we're giving them the support that they need.
Kevin, could you define what a teacher on special assignment is?
Yeah, so a teacher on special assignment is one that isn't, at the beginning, in this case, defined a particular class. And so they will be filling in for different teachers if they go on, let's say you have a teacher that's on a maternity leave. And that we can oversee those caseloads during that time, that you have a trained special education teacher. And then there's also other assignments that they're gonna be doing. Some of just communication, collaboration with those staff members to make sure that, for example, working with paraprofessionals, paraprofessional assignments that we're hope. When we're, that's another thing that we run short of, that we're covering the needs that we have, and we have someone on staff to help oversee that. That's a smaller task, but a specific one.
So they're always in a building?
They will be at the high school.
Okay.
This will be at the high school.
Eric, can I add over? So in this, with everything going on in the schools, you probably already know there was a very sad event that happened over President's weekend, and where a young student took his own life. And I just, as a, you know, retired as a pastor, I'm still a volunteer chaplain, so I was actually called to the scene and was with the family that night. But I, as a school board member, I want the rest of the school board to know what an incredible job, I believe, our superintendent and our school staff. what an incredible job, I believe, our superintendent and our school staff did. This happened on a Saturday evening. I left home about midnight on Saturday. Kevin and I talked Sunday morning. By Sunday afternoon, Kevin and Jolene, the school principal, and, and the guidance counselor were meeting with the family to determine, you know, what can we do to help you, what can we do to help the rest of the students coming back? Thankfully, we had Monday as a holiday, President's Day. In that time, they were meeting with some of the families and, and students who were the closest to this young man. They were meeting with his brother's basketball team, they were meeting with band members. So they were meeting with a lot of the, the families that were closest. By Tuesday morning, when school started, they had counselors at the high school, they had counselors from relate counseling, they had the high school junior counselors there, they had counselors from, I think, a group called Growing Through Grief. We had clergy throughout the day there to help students. They had pairs of counselors going to each of the classes that that young man was in to talk with the classmates in those classes throughout the day. They had another team of counselors going to each of the classes that his brother, who was a ninth grader, was in, to talk to those students throughout the day. They had activities for the students, ways for them to express their, their feelings and their grief. It was just an incredible, the, the whole school pulling together and under Kevin's leadership. And you guys see all the other stuff he does, but you, you know also what a caring heart he has and what a caring heart our school has. And I just wanted to, to highlight that for the rest of you. I got to be a part of it this time, but they, they did, and continue to do a, a job of really caring for the students.
Thanks for sharing that, Mark.
Good thanks, Mark.
Incredibly hard time, and as, that's really kind and generous of you to say. Really, the merits are with those staff, with those, Jolene, those teachers, others in there. Feels just so much gratitude to the family of being able to communicate with us so that we can represent them and also support other students' quality. That's a really hard thing to do, but that they were willing to talk to us early allowed us to provide better care for a lot of them around us. And we don't expect that, but in this case, we were able to connect, and that was incredibly impactful. One, I just ended on, you're reminded of the small school advantage at its very best, and these are moments in the worst of times that you get to also see some of the best. And a lot of caring hearts working very hard. Pastor Lauren, you were one of those people that were very impactful. And from your engagement to doing the service and others, it's, it's very challenging, but I, to you too. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to the action items here. Chair moves for approval of action item A-Day, approval of the position, eliminations, reductions, and additions and increases for the 2025 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item A-B, approval of the addition of a special education teacher, TOSA physician at Moundless Nocka High School, and something Kevin just talked about. So is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any, any other business, anybody? If not, chair moves for adjournment, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good one, you guys, everybody have a good Easter, good spring break.